What to do with the quarantine of twenty?
We're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Mayor Welch?
Here. Please stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance if you so desire.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all of our members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department, and city workers for the safety in the work they do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add an item three under the consent agenda, and it's a resolution endorsing passenger rail service between Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, and Newton, Kansas. Reiterating the city of Arkansas City's longstanding support for this project, supporting a multi-state partnership between Antrak and the states through which the service will operate, and urging the Kansas Department of Transportation to take action.
Oh, thank you. Is there any other additions or additions to the agenda then? Okay. Do I have an action?
I move that we approve the addition of item number three to section four to the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to add item three to section five.
Section five, yeah.
Section five of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I have a proclamation for National Disability Independence Day in Arkansas City. Is anyone here representing them? Is that Rex?
Yes.
Okay. I'll come down there, Rex. It doesn't matter. Whereas the National Disability Independence Day is celebrated each year on July twenty-sixth, and this year it commemorates the thirtieth anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, and whereas the legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas the ADA provides protection from employment and other forms of discrimination by reducing barriers and changing perceptions, increasing full participation in community life, and providing better access to good services and communications for people with disabilities, and whereas although the ADA has helped millions of Americans with disabilities to achieve equal treatment for disabled individuals, there's terrible barriers to public accommodation of which governments, corporations, and business owners need to be made aware. And the full premise of the ADA only will be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to improve our city's goal. And whereas throughout the year, on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, this city, its Equal Opportunity Accessibility Advisory Board, celebrate and recognize the progress that is made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I Karen Welch, Mayor of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, as National Disability Independence Day. In the city of Arkansas City, I do hereby affirm that city and its citizens will continue to work toward full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thanks Rex.
Thank you.
Uh, Kenny?
Commissioner Ken Herter, thirteen thirteen North First. I wanted to ask the commission if, in the near future at a commission meeting, if you could have staff bring a report to the commission. On last February, the commissioners all in a workstation, I attended, tasked staff to work on zoning codes and building codes in the future for development, especially on that First Street corridor clear, I guess, from Chestnut Avenue cleared to Kansas Avenue. That was rezoned commercial. And so I think Jay's well aware of it, some of you other, Scotty, I know you are, but this has been six months. I'd just like to have that on the agenda. Maybe the next one or the one after, and see if we can get a staff to bring us up to date on what they've done, if there's anything they need to help them. And that's, that's what I'm asking for. That's all I got.
I might, I might ask Randy to see or do here, you know, we, Ken was right, we had a workstation, I think it was, and we all agreed and kind of voted, you know, in a workstation, you know, to bring it up to the, uh,
Staff.
Yeah, staff, but also to look into that thing. But what we want to do is have separation from the people who live across the street to where our businesses are at, because, you know, they come in all hours of night and stuff, and you go all these bigger towns, there is, they either got a wall, they got separation where, you know, so the public can be, you know, isolated from what's, what's going on, and that's what we're looking at right now. And we need to have that, as we develop that corridor up through there, we need to have that, you know, down the road, so, you know, we'll protect the citizens, you know, not have to go through what Ken's been going through, you know.
And they had, in Wichita, it's like a sound barrier walls.
Yeah.
And I think, I know some Chestnut to Kansas, but I think the main concern would be mainly from Brahms or Wilson Park to Kansas would be the fir-, that's the main section, and then later on, if we ever get to the point where we're developing south of Wilson Park.
Birch, yeah.
Birch, I think that is, so.
And also that zone is on the east side of Summit also for half that block.
Yeah.
And so those people in those areas would be affected if anything develops on that side too.
Yeah.
I appreciate it if I can bring something up in our agenda and give a presentation.
We'll make you aware of it, Kenny.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Whole business? Consider second reading of an ordinance modifying municipal code of the city of Arkansas City to create section fifty dash one, requiring a special event permit to close for a private event in a city park, street, or other facility that otherwise is open to the public.
We could need to back up the consent agenda.
We haven't done the consent agenda?
No.
I need approval of the consent agenda.
So.
I probably didn't. I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Can, before he spoke?
Yeah.
Can you explain to some of the citizens the real estate agreement for Chestnut Park, in case they don't know? Yes, um, so it's basically leasing, um, Chestnut Park two. So it's leasing the Chestnut Park there at the, at the river to Kansas Wildscapes LLC, and they're basically at that point responsible for the upkeep of the property, any improvements and maintenance of it. And, but they, but also the general public still allowed use of it for fishing and boating and launching and recreational purposes. And they, they can also, um, I think they can apply for grants and things of that nature as well to, to do improvements out there, but that's, that's basically it.
How long is the lease?
Yeah, nine years, no, sixteen years, sixteen years.
Why, why so long? Is that normal in a, in a situation like that?
You know, I don't know, this started before me, so.
Yeah, Wildscape Foundation is the one that paid for a lot of those agreements to the boat ramps, so this is just continuing their investment in the area. And I know that they'll continually maintain the signage and the River Trail kind of development as that continues on the Arc River Trail.
And the boat ramps.
Hi.
Is there any other comments? Let's see, we had a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Now whole business.
I am looking for it. I had to jump back up. Consider the second reading of an ordinance modifying municipal code for the city of Arkansas City to create section fifty dash one, requiring a special event permit to close for any private event in a city park, street, or other facility that otherwise is open to the public. The city is often requested to close city streets for such events as races, parades, city parks for private events, such as concerts, and often such requests are last minute and fail to provide the city staff with sufficient time to comply with the request for the closures. Current municipal code does not address these closures, nor does it provide a framework for consideration of requests and provisions of city services for these private events. The staff desires to modify the municipal code to expressly provide for such closures and the provision of city services for private events. Any discussion? Any opinions? Any action?
I move that we approve the ordinance modifying municipal code of the city of Arkansas City to create section fifty dash one, requiring a special event permit to close for a private event in a city park, street, or other facility that otherwise is open to the public.
Do I have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second for municipal code fifty dash one. All those in favor?
It's roll call.
It's roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
We did say that in, there could be, they could waive fees if, if circumstances awarded that. At staff's discretion, is that right?
I think that was mentioned for certain things, yes. I don't know what, they weren't listed like a specific certain, but they are, yes.
That the city manager could, could waive those.
That's what I'm interested to, Commissioner.
Commissioner Gengler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. You approved the ordinance on the second reading, five zero.
I can sit to one A on that.
Uh, consider resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule. Does anyone have any questions regarding the fee schedule? Is there any discussion at all on the fee schedule? Is there an action on the?
I will make a motion that we approve a resolution that will amend the comprehensive fee schedule.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, amending the comprehensive fee schedule. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That passed, five zero. New business?
And one, consider a resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing to consider the twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Arkansas City.
I'll just say that we have worked long and hard on this, haven't we Kathy?
Yes, we have.
You want to come up and tell us all about it?
Does she have? Does she want to?
I don't know what more I can add other than what we've explained, but we suggest that you approve the notice for publication, that we have to put it, publish in the paper, we have to publish it at least ten days before the hearing date. If we get that published, we'd be able to have our hearing at the August fourth meeting to receive public comment.
Thank you, Professor.
Thanks Kathy.
Tax, the rest of the, the tax stuff's coming in, are they getting any better, or is it about the same, or do you know?
We expect our sales tax to come in either at the end of this week or first of next week, so.
But you don't really get an idea.
The property taxes have come in fine, so far the sales taxes come in nice and strong and, um, month by month.
Across your pay grade.
Is there any comments?
No, thank you Kathy, and thanks for the city staff for your hard work.
Yes.
Spent a lot of time on it.
We continue to monitor it, and we will through the end of the year, as we always do, make adjustments. As you all know, the only adjustments we can make is what we can spend, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
So what date are we gonna set, August?
August fourth.
August fourth.
That'd be at our re- next regular scheduled meeting.
Is there any action? I will move, we consider the resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for August fourth, a public hearing to consider the twenty twenty-one budget for the city of Arkansas City.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Number two, consider a resolution approving a recommendation for the Arkansas City Beautification and Tree Advisory Board to initiate an adoption contract for one year with the Walnut Valley Disc Golf Association for Robert Cox from Royal Park located at twelve oh one North Fifth Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This contract before you has been reviewed at several meetings by the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board, and they held a special meeting last Thursday and voted unanimously unanimously to recommend that you consider approving it. Um, essentially, this is just formalizing and understanding with the Walnut Valley Disc Golf Association that if there's to be disc golf baskets installed in the park, that they need to help maintain that. Um, we do have with us representatives of that group, Artie Hicks with the local organization, as well as Mike, I'm gonna mispronounce this, Chaziski? Close, um, who's also with that organization, so if you have any disc golf related questions, I'm gonna call them up to answer them, because I don't know anything about the sport. I will say from the city perspective, city manager was with us in a meeting in June, we walked through the park with Artie, uh, looking at it directly and trying to understand the layout. Um, if you can see on here, these are the proposed layout of the holes, these squares would be tee boxes about, correct me if I'm wrong, ye wide-ish. And initially, those are probably just gonna be mulch, long-term, if this proves popular, that it could be upgraded to either a form of turf or even possibly concrete, um, which allows you to get a run-up on throwing the disc toward these baskets. Um, so basically the course is laid out, would progress this way, and then come back down and sort of through the park like so. Um, there will need to be some clearing done in the right-of-way. This is an old abandoned railway line, used to be the San Francisco Railroad.
San Francisco.
Through there, and, uh, there is some trees and shrubs, we're gonna have to do some clearing there. The Disc Golf Association has volunteered to assist with that work, it's not on city staff, in order to make those holes playable. Long-term, just so you understand, we are looking at a possible trail that will continue along that right-of-way, so one of the reasons we were looking at this is to try to further enhance the popularity of Cox Park, but also, you know, we, we had a hearing a few years ago, and we talked about the possibility of, of getting rid of this park, it wasn't very popular with those who attended. There's also some issues in the property with a deed reverter that's a little complicated, so the decision of the board at the time was, well, if we're gonna keep it, let's do something with it to make it more popular and attractive to people to come to, so this is one possibility. And the nice thing about the disc golf course is you can put in these baskets and see how it goes, and in a year you can pull them out, and it's really not gonna do anything to the park itself, other than like I said, there'll be some mulch here and there, and even that could be removed. The poles themselves go into the ground, and Artie said they can be removed if they need to be for whatever reason, um, so you can just mow right over those anchor points, so it shouldn't hopefully disrupt anything that Parks and Facilities is doing already in there. Um, but we'll maintain maintenance of the park, they're not, they're not doing sort of a cleanup type operation, other than when they have events there, they're going to, of course, clean up after themselves and try to help keep it a little nicer than they left it. I think just having people there will help increase the cleanliness of it and, and hopefully the ownership that people fill in it. Down the line, we'll look at signage, uh, any signage plans we'll go through, the beautification board as we would with any other permanent signage in our parks. Uh, each hole will need a sign that kind of tells you the par and where you're throwing it and those sort of things, and then there's an overall course map sign that could be placed somewhere as well, so we'll keep working on that. I think there's some possibility of getting some grant funds to assist with that, uh, so that won't be at the city's cost, we'll just need to install whatever gets approved, and if you like, we can come to you with those signage plans as well. Other than that, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for Artie, if he wants to come up. Artie, on that Walnut Valley, uh, disc golf thing, how many people's in the, in your group?
Well, we do weekly leagues in Winfield right now.
Okay.
Well, I say Winfield, this week we're gonna go to Oxford, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we kind of move around, we'll have anywhere from, on any given Thursday night, we'll have anywhere from, I don't know, eight to twenty people.
Uh-huh.
You know, it grows kind of in the summer, we're getting a lot of younger people right now, you know, we're getting a lot of, you know, uh,
Sure.
I don't know, I'd say, we've had a lot of high school kids recently, you know, starting up with us on Thursday nights.
I think you're coming into an area where there's a lot of children in that area.
Yeah, and the, it, the diversity of the people you'll find that show up to play, it's unbelievable. I mean, it, it's, you know, it's from little kids who play better than I do to, you know, guys, I played with a guy that was seventy-two years old, you know, I mean, and he said, I just like to get out and walk and, you know, see the course, gives him a purpose to, you know, to walk, nobody really likes to walk for fun. I don't know.
I, question, have you ever given a thought, I mean, I'm just bringing, just throwing down here just food for thought, but you know, that could be a wonderful rec program too, you know, through recreation, you know.
Yes, one thing I, I don't think Andrew did bring up is that, this, the baskets were actually made by FFA at the high school.
Wow.
They, um, you know, they contacted us a, oh, a couple of years ago, and said, we want to make these baskets for a project, for a school project, could you help us get them in the ground? Because it was originally, they were gonna put them in at the high school, and as that got forward, the school board really didn't want, like, unlimited public access, what, you know,
Yeah.
to just be milling around, playing golf while kids are at school or whatever, you know, so they, they said they didn't want it there, so we're working with the high school right now.
Okay, I'll talk about the rec center, you know.
Oh yeah, the rec center, yeah, that, we'll, we'll have, this course will be more of a beginner type course, so with that, we'll have, we'll work with the schools, we'll work with the rec centers, we'll try to get as many, as many youth as we can out there, and, because that's really what this course is gonna be designed for.
What I'm saying is, it might, I'm just throwing it out here, just food for thought, but it may be that, you know, that they could look, run the thing for you, you know, and stuff like that, and you still have, just like you have wrestling, you know, that, you know, you have your,
Oh, yeah.
it could be a department program, you know, and we just, you know, add it to, to the, you know, to that, to their, you know.
Right, and just to help get the word out there, yeah, I mean, because right now we run a Thursday league, and we participate in a Wednesday league as well, all of us in Winfield, so. It'd be nice, like we said, we, with this park, we will, at least once a month, we'll have that league that we have on Thursday nights, we'll bring it here.
Wow.
You know, and hopefully more, you know, more often, it's just, you know, you kind of gotta get everything worked in and.
Are those baskets along the right-of-way?
What's that?
Those basket poles are along the right-of-way?
No, no, they're on the sides. Uh, Andrew, uh, and the beautification committee walked it with us to kind of make sure, um, and that, that's not set in stone, we can kind of move that around a little bit, you know, that was just a nice layout that flowed.
Okay.
And those baskets can be moved.
Yeah, there's sleeves in the ground, you know, and they, they go into sleeves, so once you pull them out of that sleeve, that sleeve is in the ground, but you can mow right over the top of it.
If need be, yeah.
Like the rotary flags.
Yeah, yeah, but it's bigger.
Oh, okay.
Exactly, the exact same concept.
Okay.
You know, it, it's a, I've only played it a few times, but when I do play, a lot of kids love it, and it is kind of an addicting sport, I just don't have the time for, and I don't really take time to do, but it is fun, I mean, it is kind of a neat activity, neat, hot and a fun hobby.
Monster course, you can bring, you can bring your kids out there, you could teach them, you know, introduce them, we, we plan on running some leagues like that with some, you know, with some of the youth and just try to encourage them.
I think that's what Commissioner Warren was wanting, is just to encourage, if we're gonna have it, encourage it, and maybe set up a way to grow the sport, at least grow some popularity with it.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, and maybe have it through the rec center, because they can run those programs, you know, which, which could help you guys out, I mean, you know, you could still be the charge of it, but, you know, for the signup or stuff like that, or however.
Oh, exactly, we have no problem working with it, you know, we went out when we did this, when we designed this or set this up with the FFA.
Uh-huh.
Me and Mike went out, went with the FFA students and the teachers to the Camp Horizon and played a round out there with them.
Yeah.
Um, it was total chaos, but it was kind of fun, it was cast, because there was two of us, and there was a whole class of kids, you know, so we kind of, we, yeah, it, but it was a blast, and you could, you could see they enjoyed it as well, so.
Horizon?
I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it should've been done a long time ago.
It should've been, and actually, I mean, that we, ultimately, we want a, we want a, a big, nice championship course like, like other towns have got right now, but this is getting our foot in the door, and we're doing it with baskets that were made by teaming up with the FFA, you know. Um, so when, when this gets popular and you see all the youth out there playing, we're gonna eventually come to you to say, let's, let's put something really nice, really big and beautiful, and let's get a, let's, let's have major tournaments here.
Yeah.
But that's down the line, I just.
But what I'm saying is, that could be a partnership with the rec center and the city, you know.
One hundred percent, yes.
So does Winfield have a big course?
Yeah, they, well, they had one at the, um, Congrove, and there's, the sleeves are still in there, and we can set it up anytime, but they never, they don't mow the Congrove enough, we didn't want, and it floods so much, we didn't really want to put it back in, but we have the baskets, we don't, but the people who have them, we know where they're at, we can, we can use them like, they'll, they'll be in in October, they'll put that whole course back in. Um, but they have Cherry Street, we play Cherry Street, it's a nine-hole course.
Oh, that's nice.
That's my next question, is it eighteen baskets or?
Well, that's nine there, and that's what we use, like Cherry Street, we'll just play nine, we go around twice, and we still hold events at Cherry Street, we got enough portable baskets, we can still hold events with eighteen, we can come and put baskets in, you know, set them up anywhere, that, you know, on wheels that roll right down there, you know. Uh, and that's the goal ultimately, is we will have events there, we'll have monthly, but we'll have tournaments there, we'll, we'll bring people in here that will spend some money on, uh, you know, eating and having some food and drinks, and who knows, they might stay the night depending on how, you know, what we can put together.
Yeah, yeah, with that, with that being said, I, I make a motion, we consider a resolution approving the recommendation of Arkansas City Beautification and Tree Advisory Board to initiate and adopt contract for one year with the Walnut Valley Disc Golf Association, WVDGA, for Robert Cox Memorial Park located at twelve oh one North Fifth Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation for the Walnut Valley Disc Golf Association occupying twelve oh one North Fifth Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Marty, it's a good job.
Thank you, Artie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Artie.
Can you guarantee me a good score?
Yes, yes.
Just play one hole, just play one hole.
I do appreciate you guys' time and thank you for the consideration, remember our faces, we will be back to, uh, to make this bigger and better.
We, we accept the invitation, you do that.
Find another park in town we're not using very much.
Okay, number three.
Consider a resolution accepting a proposal submitted by Trane Systems, in which it provides professional consulting services on the US seventy-seven and Kansas Avenue Traffic Impact Study Project for a amount of not exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions, opinions, thoughts?
This is something that's been looked at or talked about in the past, hasn't it?
Oh, yes.
There, there's some, there is, uh, some real interest, some solid interest in this commercial development right in that area, so this is a part of that to allow access to that property.
Well, we have to have that done before we can even do that, you know, into that thing, so it's, it's pretty important, and we've talked about this thing for.
That's, um, one of the, one of the things that they talked about at the time was the traffic impact study project, they needed to, the information before they could even. impact study project, they needed to, the information before they could even proceed to go ahead, so, I, uh.
In motion?
Need a motion.
I move that we approve a resolution accepting a proposal submitted by Trans Systems of Wichita, Kansas, to provide professional consulting services on the US seventy-seven Kansas Avenue Traffic Impact Study Project for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, I second it. All those in favor say aye.
I have a quick question.
Could you wait till the motion, till we go through the motion, please?
Isn't that one you asked?
I'm sorry?
You have a motion, a second, isn't that what you asked for a second, second question?
Further from the Commission.
I'm gonna have to get ready to vote.
I was getting ready to make the vote, is this, is this gonna affect the vote?
I don't know, just a question.
Okay, can we go ahead and take the vote, and then you asked your question?
Well, what's the point of asking, I'm gonna vote on it.
Is it reference to this?
Well, of course it is, I'm asking now.
Well, I don't know why you didn't sign your name, Mel, to come in.
Because this is on the agenda, I have someone who provides on the agenda.
Okay.
She's a quick question.
Quick question, Mel.
This is for the area where the car wash is at, in Simpack Stadium?
Where, what do you mean car wash?
There's no car wash there.
Where, where, um, McGowan's Car Wash is at?
No.
No, bypass.
It's on the bypass.
Bypass, seventy-seven.
Oh, on the bike, oh, oh, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Mel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Okay, well, in your package, there's, uh, some information to keep in mind here the next weeks, uh, the, kind of the big thing on here is the first time ever the in, in-person advanced voting coming up, um, from ten AM to two PM on July twenty-eighth, outdoor treatment facility plant, so that's a, kind of a big deal for us here.
Well, the, all the voting for the City of Arkansas City, be, be there too, I mean, on that day, on August fourth, or whatever it is.
No.
Central Christian.
So it would be Central Christian?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
We'll have a press release about it. Yep, and then of course, the election day voting will be on August fourth from seven to seven at the Central Christian Church, and then the other thing, laying on your desk, was the press release from the county health officer, kind of giving us some, some case counts total, and he also broke it down by a bit code, and so you can kind of see what's going on there, good information, and that's all I really have.
On, on the report from COVID, I would just like to encourage all the citizens to wear a mask, it's a governor's, not a mandate, but a order, and it looks like Arkansas City's got the most cases of the hundred and eighteen, so I think it would behoove the citizens to try and wear a mask if they can, I know they can't all, but let's try to get rid of this thing by everybody, even those that think they'll never get it, I think they should try and help everybody else, because there are people out here that can get that, so I think we should, should encourage the governor's orders.
Is there anything else?
I make motion, adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.